To all, welcome to the city council meeting, 6:30 meeting here at Titusville. And the meeting is calling, please, let's take a moment of silent prayer. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum, and we have minutes in our package, line item A.
Sir, before we do that, could we do the clerk's speaking rules?
Oh, thank you. The speaking rules for the clerk?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. Council, we have before us in line at 4A, the minutes from March 14th.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on March 14, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made, and second, call for questions. Seeing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. With that, we have turned it over to City Mayor.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. The first item is the boards in commission, the North of our Library District Board, and this is their semi-annual report that's included in your packet. No action is necessary.
Thank you, City Mayor. I have seven additions and three questions. May I state your name?
Megan Moscoso, 3031 Demerit Drive. I am joined by my neighbors, who are all here dressed in blue, to raise that issue that concerns us. First of all, thank you for allowing us to speak. On January 31st, 2023, a 7.3 acre plot of land was sold to Apollo Gardens, L L P, in Miami, Florida. The limited liability, limited partnership of Apollo Gardens is in partnership with Carrefour Supportive Housing. Carrefour is not only involved in managing the business, but Carrefour is protected from the partnership's liabilities and debts. The plan of Apollo Gardens Carrefour is to build a one-story, 84, I mean, sorry, three-story, 84-single-unit complex at the end of Demerit Drive. The principal planner of the city of Titusville believes that Apollo Gardens will be an 84-unit multifamily apartment building that will include affordable housing. However, according to an application submitted by Carrefour on July 14th, 2022, to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, Apollo Gardens will serve high utilizers. By definition, patients who impose a disproportionately high burden on the healthcare system due to their elevated resource use. According to this document, the most common diagnosis for these adults will include schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, schizoaffective disorder, and co-occurring substance use disorder. This does not sound like multifamily apartment buildings. The document goes on to say that adhering to the Housing First Low Demand Model is of particular importance. This model encourages residents to access and engage in services that will improve their lives without requiring their participation. Thus, Apollo Gardens will be a low demand but high services, since a high level of clinical services will be available. Now, as a mother of a kindergartner and a third grader, and a neighbor to many elderly neighbors and widows, this project is of great concern. As a former fundraiser for an organization in Orlando that worked to support those on the brink of homelessness, this issue is dear to my heart. But through this process, I have come to realize my strong passion for my neighbors and their life stories. Over the past few weeks, I've spent countless hours listening to their experiences, such as Ms. Janet Davis, who's been residing in our home since 1969, who raised her four children in that home and recently lost her husband. Ms. Davis intends to live in her home until her final breath, but with this new development, she is considering moving. Our neighborhood is comprised of middle-class individuals, all with unique and genuine stories to tell. We still socialize outside in our front yards. We borrow cake pans. We bring in others' trash cans. Our passion comes from our community. So as representatives elected by the community, we urge you to remember our stories and the established community that already exists. This is an opportunity for you to demonstrate your concern for the long-term residents of Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Winnie Brewer. I live at 47 East Broad Street, Titusville. I am here this evening to enlighten the council as to the ongoing situation at Veterans Memorial Park. The park is approximately 100 feet from our small condominium complex. Some of the council members may be aware of the situation, but in any event, I wanted to provide some insight on what is a daily and an evening occurrence. A group that is most likely homeless is at this beautiful park from sunup and into the late evenings, a lot of the times overnight. If you're familiar with the park, they congregate on the front white benches and stay there the entire day. During the day, they sleep on the benches, eat there. They have their luggage and carts with all of their belongings packed, basically not allowing the general public to use the park. For me personally, I used to be able to bring my grandchildren over there, walk daily through the park, and enjoy it for its intended purpose. I think you all know that I love my community, my hometown, and want it to thrive. The park is a part of the city and maintained by the county. What used to be a once-per-week cleaning up of the park has now turned into pretty much a daily or every other day occurrence, consisting of picking up trash, clearing out junk, repairing the bathroom sinks and doors that get damaged and broken, and hauling off items left from the people, such as mattresses, blankets, and pillows. I appreciate the county and their continuing work to maintain and beautify the park. I also give our Titusville PD kudos in that they are there on a daily occurrence, sometimes two or three times a day, surveying the area, breaking up disputes, handling illegal activity, all in all, an attempt to try to have the individuals leave. As you can imagine, their hands are tied due to the current laws. There is a brickstone at the front of the park before the benches, where there will be up to eight individuals from this group charging their mobile devices. Do you think that is really necessary? A possible solution to that would be to lock or turn off the accessibility to the electricity and only use it when the county representatives are on-site for this property. The bathrooms seem to be a constant state of gathering for them, and perhaps a solution to this would be to lock the doors in the evening. Certainly, if we have lunches, they can be unlocked at night. However, this area is a real concern, in that there have been several altercations there and drug overdoses. When we walk out and try to enjoy the park, our homeowners have been yelled at, we are continuously watched coming and going from our complex, threatened. Basically, for the most of us, we feel unsafe in this environment. A possible solution for that is to have round-the-clock security, and I know that's a budget matter.
How much more time do you need to finish your?
Just a few, just one minute. With regard to the benches, which seems to allow them to congregate all day and sleep all, and sleep all day, we would suggest you remove them until the situation is rectified.
Thank you.
We have other homeowners that are going to speak.
That's a wonderful, wonderful report. You see that our wonderful law enforcement officers are on top, doing our best that we can do with that, and we will continue to do our best to help with that situation. Next?
Interesting. I'm about to discuss the same subject. My name is Patricia Adamo.
Can we talk to partisan rec about the charging and locking the bathrooms at night?
I think that bathrooms are locked at night.
Are they?
Yeah, and I know that they've turned off the electricity at one of the parks already, and I don't think Sandpoint's turned off yet, but we've asked them to turn Sandpoint off.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Patricia Adamo. I have been a psychotherapist for 40 years, and I'm here to discuss the situation at Apollo Gardens, which is pretty similar to what this earlier woman was talking about, the population. Let's make a distinction between folks who are not mentally ill or drug addicts because of unfortunate circumstances, and they become homeless. But we are not dealing with that population here. The fact is, we are dealing with what psychologists label dual-diagnosis patients, people who have mental illness as well as an addiction. Both conditions require professional help and medication management. But at this location, we are told by the owners, participation is not required. I think it should be mandatory. We have people who need to be on medication. They state they will have case managers on staff, but a case manager cannot administer medication. They are not credentialed to control a person who's having a psychotic episode from medication withdrawal, and they're not qualified to do a Baker Act. So they would have to call a police officer, 911. Now we're bringing in law enforcement intervention, ambulance or EMT intervention, and if somebody is having a psychotic episode, how do we notify our neighbors that it's wandering through the neighborhood and dangerous to the community? As a former therapist and addiction specialist, the population is most likely to go off their legitimate drugs and medications and use street drugs. So now we have another situation. We have a population who is behaviorally seeking drugs. Now we're going to have drug dealers coming into the neighborhood, buying and selling. That could include weapons, shootings, altercations, fights, whatever, because we're dealing with a population that is notorious for drug-seeking. The fact that they're represented as homeless and multifamily just doesn't make sense in Carrefour's description of what the property is being used for. So I'd like to draw the city council's attention to the fact, what's really being done here. We're simply taking the patients that we normally house at Circles of Care in Melbourne, where I worked for three years, and Palm Point, which is Palm Bay. There's not much room for them there, so they're moving them up north. But they don't belong in a community of homes. They belong in a location where they're not a danger to the population there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. State your name and?
Hello, my name is Carl Jenkins. I'm also speaking on Apollo Gardens. My name is Carl Jenkins. I'm also speaking on Apollo Gardens. Like, I'm a corrections deputy, and I also, I work with them 12 hours, excuse me, I'm a corrections deputy, and I work with them for 12 hours. Okay. That helps. I work with them for 12 hours a day, so I know how they are. If they have an episode, it usually takes three or four officers, maybe more, to take them down. And you're speaking on a community of like 50-year-old, 50, 60-year-old neighborhood, so I feel that's very unsafe. Former, I know they're not doing any background checks on the residents, so you could have a pedophile living right behind our house, and we have daycares right there. We have churches right there with the daycare as well. So, and also, the crime rate, the crime rate would go up. I chose this community because it's a loving community. It's very respectful. They're friendly, and I wanted to raise my kids, and I have a one and a two-year-old, nine and a 15-year-old. It'll be hard for them to go outside and play basketball, playing thing, and when you have these guys walking up and down the street. Me personally, I work in the jail. I won't be like, go, be able to go in front of my yard because they will know me, and I don't want them knowing where I live at. If I go in my backyard, they'll see me in my backyard, so it's like I'm a prisoner in my own house. So I please ask you to reconsider Apollo Gardens.
And thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Before we get too far into this, the question is actually for Brad. Do we have anything, any information on Apollo Gardens? Has anything been submitted to the city?
We have a site plan that was submitted for a multifamily development on Demerit Drive, and it's in review. We have not completed our first review of the site plan.
So, other than multifamily, we don't know what it is?
The site plan indicated they are proposing an affordable housing development, but we don't know anything more than that.
Okay.
That's what we received as far as the application. Now, since then, I've received information from the public about what they found out. So what you're hearing tonight is the same thing I've heard from the public.
So is there anything in our ordinances that would stop that kind of development?
The zoning is multifamily, and the proposed number of residential units does not exceed the maximum density, so it is a permitted use, as far as we see so far. But we have not completed our first review of the site plan yet.
Okay. So, bottom line is, at this point, they've got this application in there. If we started adding restrictions on them legally, it would be a problem.
I would think they, the code, well, the regulations in place now would apply.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, well, I think we're at a point that there's nothing that the city council or any of the other organizations within the city can do, because we do not have a physical submission from them. So, once the physical position from them comes in and it goes through P and zoning, and then it'll come to us. So, I'm not trying to stifle what you have to say tonight, because basically, when it comes back before us, you're gonna have to come back and say it again.
The application is formally submitted to us.
Okay.
And the code does not require it to come before city council.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good. That's as far as we know, because based on the information that was submitted to us, it's a multifamily development. There's nothing that we have found so far in the code to require it to come before city council. But again, we're still reviewing it.
Okay. That tells you where our stand is right now. We have no official information on what your concerns are.
That's fine. I just wanted to bring them to you, and I'm referring back to Bay Point over next to the War Memorial Park, back to Winnie Brewer's conversation, so. Yes, sir. My name is Curtis Keizer. I live at 21 Broad Street, East Broad Street, which is in Bay Point. I live in the first townhome overlooking the park. So, as Winnie stated earlier, it's just a chronic issue, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. I did take pictures of the signs today that are posted out there, clearly stating you cannot ride bicycles and things like that through the park, which is being done, and just trying to find ways to control the situation there with the, it's just an ongoing problem with what's going on there, which Winnie eloquently stated. So, but one thing that I did see that was sad, amongst many things, with fights and verbal abuse towards myself and towards everybody else, and we live there, and we live right on the river, so, but the saddest thing was it says right there, Veterans Memorial Park, right there, and the signs are right there. And I saw a guy get out, he was in a wheelchair with a veteran's cap on, and he, someone was pushing him out there, and the people were sitting in those two, those benches right there, and he, and just left. He wanted to go out and pay tribute at the memorial park, and it was the saddest thing for me to watch. I mean, he fought for our country, and that park's apparently named for the people that fought for our company. The MIA flag is there. I just think the home situation is, while I feel for them, I don't feel that they should be overrunning a place that has so much beauty and means so much to so many people, especially people who've served in the armed services and for our country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Melissa Foley, and I live at 3110 Demerit Drive, and I'm here to speak to you about the Apollo Gardens. And I know that it was said that you don't have much information or that you have no control of what's going on, but the information that we found says otherwise, that it's not a multifamily apartment complex, that it's what my neighbors and I are speaking of. So, I'm just gonna speak for a little bit about traffic. My husband and I are fairly new to the neighborhood, having recently purchased our home last August. In selecting our first house together, we placed high importance on a quiet and peaceful neighborhood to raise our children and grow old in. As a disabled veteran with a chronic illness and periods of convalescence, I needed to feel safe in my own home and part of a community that cares and looks after one another, and that's exactly what we found in Royal Oaks. I have many concerns regarding this new development and how it will affect the quality of life of my family and my neighbors, but specifically, like I said, I'm here to address traffic. The Apollo Landing plans show a single entry and exit point at the end of Demerit Drive. With a high-density 84-unit development and neighborhood that was not designed to accommodate a large amount of traffic, we are anticipating a huge impact in the neighborhood. Due to the nature of residents or patients at Apollo Gardens, there will be a need for emergency services to frequently pass through our narrow roads. As traffic volume increases, the safety of our streets decline, along with property value, air quality, and the quiet that we enjoy in our homes. I urge the council to drive through our neighborhood to see with your own eyes why we are all so concerned. When cars are parked on the street or when work is being done on houses, there is limited space for heavy-duty delivery and emergency vehicles to travel through, not to mention the league of construction equipment that will go to and from the construction site during the building of the development. My neighbor Kelly will go further into that in a moment, but I'll add that heavy trucks emit noise of 90 dB when they pass by. According to the World Health Organization, 70 dB is the maximum noise level that people should be exposed to over the course of a normal day to prevent hearing loss. Additionally, in reference to safety, pedestrian deaths in Florida are on the rise. Florida has the second-highest fatalities per capita and the largest increase in pedestrian deaths in the entire country. Most pedestrian deaths occur in neighborhoods like ours, where if this development goes through, people are just moving through in order to arrive at a destination rather than going to and from one's own home and neighborhood. A pedestrian is nine times more likely to die at 30 miles per hour versus 20 miles per hour, at an obstructed view, parked cars in the road, and heavier traffic, and we are looking at a recipe for disaster. Children elderly have a disproportionately higher risk of pedestrian deaths, so naturally, I'm quite concerned about this in our neighborhood. I'll add that, along with the deterioration of the quality of life of my neighbors, that my neighbors and I will experience if this comes to fruition, houses and neighborhoods burdened by traffic are valued 8 to 10% less when compared to homes on a quieter street. This is without factoring in the issues that my neighbors have and will address. Please help preserve our neighborhood character and way of life by opposing the Apollo Landing development. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, may I ask how many individuals we have going to speak on this topic, knowing, and you want to speak and knowing that it hasn't came before us at this particular, and you, as the council member said, you will, if it comes before us, you will have to come back again. All right. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Please, your name and?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Maria Ely. I live at 65 East Broad Street, along with my other two neighbors that presently spoke. I just have a couple of more items. Our unit actually faces the river, and from our unit, we can actually see the gazebo and the pier that walks out there. So, our concern, my concern, is not only of safety for those people that are out there in the middle of the night, I'm talking 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, some of them hanging hammocks and sleeping in the gazebo, hanging their wet clothes all over. I've seen them even standing up on top of the railings, which is a huge concern. If they fall in the water, they could hurt themselves, drown. And also, the noise level. So, I've been walking up many times that we wake up in the middle of the night, hearing screaming and talking loudly and music, very loud music, you know, in addition to obviously the loitering. And there is a, the signs do say that the park closes at dusk, but apparently, you know, they're not following those rules. So I'm just asking for you guys to consider some solutions. One thing I thought of, and obviously, there's a cost to that, would be to add some gates to those docks, those piers, so that they cannot walk out over the water at night when the park is closed, at, you know, a level of concern for them as well. Anyone getting hurt there would not be, would not be a pretty thing. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you again. And thank you to the police department, because their presence in the last several days, I think, is making a difference. And although we thank them for coming out, we know we have, they have other things that are of much more importance to deal with in the city of Titusville. So, thank you to the police department. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, my name is Kelly Murray. I live at 3061 Demerit Drive in Royal Oaks. As a civil construction worker for almost 12 years, I'm fully aware of the equipment and logistics involved in development of roads, parking lots, and housing. As our neighborhood was developed in the 1960s, the infrastructure was never intended to handle the delivery of equipment, including but not limited to the following: excavators, motor graders, front loaders, rollers, bulldozers, paving machines, cranes, dump trucks, and the 50-foot-long trucks that will deliver said equipment. Access through only one road, Demerit Drive, which is very narrow, as it was over 50 years old. Accompanied with this will be the workers, their personal and company vehicles that will deliver the workers and materials with the same limited access on a dead-end road with limited parking for these vehicles. I expect over the course of the development that there will be hundreds of trucks and workers during the development. Also, there is a concern of adding wastewater, stormwater, and freshwater in which the infra- Also, there is a concern of adding wastewater, stormwater, and freshwater in which the infrastructure concurrently barely handle with limited ways and areas in which to connect the existing infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will make this short and get to the point. I'm also here representing Demerit Drive that comes off.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Billy Joe Clayton. I'm at 2898 Demerit Drive. It is the private road that is off Harrison of Spanish Oaks Golf Villas. A condo, mature condo that's been established there in 1974. It will be 50 years old next year. So, you can imagine families, we've inherited many families in this neighborhood. We have the gate, so it ends right there. What I would like to make my statement is that our storm wastewater drainage system, Spanish Oaks and all three associations there, will not give permission for access to use our stormwater drainage. You might remember, if you've lived here long enough, that the entrance to our property had a collapsed drainage system years ago. Between the city and us, it came to almost $50,000. It was terrible, mainly from the runoff from the golf course. Our roads always flooded. So, again, that would be my main statement today for our little tiny drive of Demerit, that we will not share or grant access to that stormwater drainage system. And I'll bring the rest back later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name's Vicki Conklin and I will be the last speaker about Apollo Gardens tonight, I think, of our group. So, I will provide a little bit about public transportation and do a summary.
Your address.
Sorry?
Your address.
My address? 2920 Royal Oak Drive. So, I'm glad that we're here to provide extra information for you. We've done a lot of research. I understand Public Works maybe has only received a partial application, but we've read 132-page document that has been submitted by CAR4. 132 pages. And I've read it three times. Megan's read it. And we wanna know, have you even seen it? And it sounds like maybe Brad hasn't seen it either. But that is where it's described, about the kind of tenants that would be there. So, we're glad to provide information. The access is a big issue, as we said. Demerit and Ternessa are the only way for the property because Spanish Oaks and Village Square are both fenced and gated. So, public transportation, the nearest is a half a mile to a public bus stop. They mentioned in their proposal, the YMCA is two miles away, 28-minute walk, perhaps. Well, I don't know who's gonna pay for them to belong to the Y. I can't afford it. I'm on social security, but whatever. Shopping, Wynn Dixie, Walgreens, how are they gonna get there? They gonna hop the fence to Spanish Oaks? Probably. And it says that adults would start at age 16. We find that a little concerning as well. We may have some teenagers there. And on page 35 of the document, they state that no criminal background checks would be done. And so, we kinda wonder, are there going to be sexual predators, burglars, thefts, a history of assaults? We don't know because they're not telling us that. And they won't know if they don't do criminal background checks. So, if medication-assisted treatment, that's the current thing, and a high-level behavioral health services, at what point does it become a residential treatment facility? Who's going to be administering the meds? Will be given the meds to the, to the tenant and say, now you take this every day. We understand circles of care will have vans that will take them to Rockledge if they need monthly injections, but that's not clear. Who's going to be administering daily meds? It becomes a really different thing than just apartments for homeless. So, it's a three-story. It's really not in character with the rest of the development and what's around with surrounding homes or with condos. Three stories is gonna raise way above the tree line, which means lights are going to be in everybody's backyards over the tree canopies. The nearest three-story is an apartment complex on Knox McRae. So, the bottom line is, we have read the 132-page document. We're fearful of what that could be. We don't think it's an appropriate project for our neighborhood, and we're asking you all to intervene. We fully understand that you haven't seen the project. It's at staff level. It does not need to go to planning and zoning. It does not need to come to city council for approval. It's clearly at staff level. Is that correct, Mr. Parrish?
At this point, yes.
Yes. So, that's a problem. Thank you very much.
You're mighty welcome. Any more card? All right. We wanna thank you and we, we hear your voices and understand that where we are at this particular point, we're just listening here to show that we care and we want to hear, but we still have to follow the laws, the rules, and regulations. All right? Thank you. If you put in, you wanna put in a card, sir?
I did not.
Got on your card? Okay.
My name's Eric Ball, 2400 Kaiser Court over in Royal Oak. The question I have then, if it, if it is just a staff issue, is this basically a done deal already? That, that's really concerning to me. So, if we're gonna have, I mean, I have little kids who live in this neighborhood, and if we're gonna have people that are on meds or mentally challenged or whatever, and, and I don't say that in a derogatory way. I have a mentally handicapped daughter. And so, I'm not saying it like that, but what I am saying is, if that's gonna, if it's just staff level and there's no approval, I know we have to follow the law, but are we already talking it's a done deal and we just might as well forget it and just be quiet? Or what's the next step?
No, that is not being said. The, the process still has to continue before we can get to that particular.
Okay. What would the next process be, or step in the process? Could, does anyone know?
Sure. So, the site plan review process requires us, all various staff members to review it to make sure it's compliant with the code. If, for example, there's a deviation from the code that they can't meet, there is a process to handle that. It might require a hearing before a variance. If the use they're proposing is not consistent with the code or if it requires a public hearing, they'll have to go through that process. But we won't know that until we complete our, our first review of this project.
Is there a date for that?
We usually turn these site plans around about 30 days for a review. And then we provide that comment letter with suggestions on how to bring the project in compliance. And then they have an opportunity to resubmit addressing those concerns. So, that usually happens about two, three times. And if everything's consistent with the code, if they adhere to the code requirements, we have to approve the site plan.
Okay. Understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If all said and done, we thank you for coming in and giving us your concerns and we, we hear what you have to say. Right. Thank you. With that line item done, we'll move on to consent.
Onto consent agenda item. City council, are there any questions for staff that you have on consent agenda items A through F? City council, do you wanna pull any items on, under consent items A through F?
No.
City clerk, are there any cards on consent agenda items A through F?
No, sir.
With your permission, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Please.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the FY, or, excuse me, approve 2023 Red, White, and Boom Fourth of July celebration. Item B, approve the award for the annual stormwater and piping installation services. Consent agenda item 8C, accept the corrected conservation easement. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the community shades stops. Consent agenda item 8E, approve work order for the Marina Park analysis and concept design. And consent agenda item 8F, approve the award of the contract for the Blue Heron pre-treatment structural repairs.
Thank you, city manager. And I need, all of the consent agenda items have been read. I need a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda. Call for a second.
I'd make a second, but I think we need to check, make sure there's no cards.
We did.
No, he did.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Paying attention. So, I'll second it.
Okay. The, the motion has been made and, and second on the consent agenda call item. Call for question. Hearing done. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
I'm not sure if there's a resolution as part of this. Might wanna ask for a roll call just to cover that.
Roll call? All right. We'll do that. We'd like to hear our name called. Please, city clerk.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Onto item, new business under 12A. This is resolution 142023 to amend the city's deferred compensation and defined contribution plans, allowing the particip, participation, say that again, by the elected officials. The city of Titusville has established a deferred compensation plan pursuant to the provisions of section 457B of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, has amended the, the 457 plan and has established a 401A government money purchase plan. A deferred compensation plan pursuant to provisions of section 401A of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, has amended the 401A plan for employees of the city of Titusville. The plans are administered by Nationwide Financial Services Incorporated with the administrative support of the city manager and his designee. And the city makes contributions to the 401A plan on behalf of the eligible employees, matching the employee contributions up to 4% of the employee's base pay. The city desires to amend the adoption agreements for each plan as necessary to provide participation by the city's elected officials.
All right. Thank you, city manager. We have, and any questions or concerns from members? We have any cards? No cards, no question? And I need a motion on resolution number 142023.
Move to approve resolution number 142023, amending the city's deferred compensation and defined contribution plans.
Motion, I call for a sec. Roll call?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Yeah. Line item 13.
Onto petitions and requests. And I, I don't wanna speak for Officer Cruz, but he did wanna make sure city council knows that he's still working out.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. No more petitions and requests, city guard. Everything is done. All right. Line item 14, the mayor and the council report. Reporting for the mayor, the mayor is, is, is enjoying himself wherever he is. And we just pray that he have a safe and wonderful rest period. Was that, with anything that you have to share with us? Was it called, member Cole?
No.
Anyone else?
I'm trying to decide.
Okay.
The one thing that I did wanna say is, back about six years ago, before you guys showed up, Peggy Basaka came up with a beautiful plan for Royal Oak Country Club. And it would've covered Royal Oak and Lucida. And Royal Oak did not like it. And they came here and spoke for a long time, very long time, about this is horrible. They were going to turn Royal Oak into an executive golf course. And of course, now, we don't have an executive golf course. And now, everybody is wailing and gnashing their teeth because somebody has come in and wants to develop it. So, I regret, I will say, I regret that we didn't just ignore those homeowners and accept Peggy's plan because it was, it was beautiful. But that's hindsight, and apparently, we're too late to do it now. So, it's just sad.
Thank you. The only thing that came to, the biggest thing that came to my, my mind was NIMBYism, but we'll, we'll move on from that. Well, several things that has happened, and I wanna give it to the city manager and the city staff for giving all of the children in our educational system a token of, of joy, appreciation. Standing in one spot a long time causes one egg to burn, but we got through, we got through it. That was, that was very nice. And, and I also want to say to the city manager, you know, I'm glad he served this country the way he did. He knows how to bring the troops together and, and let them fellowship together and eat and then breaking bread. And I, I enjoyed that Thursday, two weeks, I think it was two weeks ago now.
Yeah.
And I really enjoyed that, you know. You ran, you began to run out of food there at the end, but, but let's work on that for next year. But, and, and that was very good. And I was feeling in for the mayor and Member Stokel at the League of Cities down in Indian Atlantic last night. Food was good. The message was good, talking about mental health. And that's a big topic, a big, big issue that we should be concerned about because it's ever-increasing and it's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to address it at some point and we're gonna have to continue to think about it. So, that, that's what I have to go forward. Yes, ma'am.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I was sort of excited because I picked up this magazine the other day.
Mm-hmm. It's a trend.
And a couple of years ago, Coach Pete and I had talked about seeing if we could get funding for Titusville to do this. And the Lake Orange Expressway has it. And I thought this is cool. So, I thought I should share it. This is a lane for electric vehicles. And you travel that lane and it automatically charges your car.
It automatically charges your car?
Yes, under the roadway.
While you travel. So, not only we're gonna, you're gonna, you get, you get a nice expensive car, now you get a special lane.
Now you get a special lane. Joe? Joe, you could have a special lane too. No, in talking to Coach Pete, we were like, this would be so cool if he can get the money for us to have this downtown. Because, you know, I gotta tell you, there are people that would come downtown just to drive back and forth on.
On their special lane.
On their special one.
Very good. Thank you.
I don't know.
How did I know that that was gonna come up? There you go. Well, that is for us, city manager.
Yes, sir. Before I, I get into my report with the information items, we do have Commander Demmon here, who I'd like to bring up to the podium as we are addressing the, the, I call them campers in the park.
Yeah.
Because that's when, what we're doing. And there's some things that we can and there's some things that we can't do. And we're trying our best. And with that, Matt, if you could come up and address council on what we're doing.
Wonderful.
And it is on this time, right? So, I don't have to push it. So, we are addressing some of the issues. We're meeting with local pastors. We have met with our Parks and Rec, the supervisors of, through Parks and Rec. And we've increased some patrol efforts in an effort to not only do some enforcement issues, but also do some education as well. So, we have a lot of people that visit our parks. We have a lot of citizens that like to go through walks and take their kids to the splash pad and do some different things. So, it can be a little depressing when you go out there and you see campers and you see people that are loitering and just making the park look undesirable. So, from us, it's a quality of life issue. We wanna make sure that we're doing everything the right way. And if we have to take enforcement issue, enforcement action, we are. And that would include anybody that is, you know, drug-related use, alcohol violations, things like that. So, we do have a ordinance that allows camping in the park prior to and after a launch. So, we're gonna be looking at some issues what, as it relates to that. But as far as enforcement issues go in our presence, you are going to see more of an increased presence in the parks, just to give people that reassurance that we are there and that we're doing our best to try and quell some of this issue. And I think with some of the things that we'll be doing through communications with some of our local leaders and throughout the churches in the community, I think we're gonna come up with a really good solution to help try and address these issues. So, any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you. But I, I know it's gonna get, become more challenging. Yeah.
It is, but we'll be on top of it.
Yep. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Matt. I have two information items for council. One, staff has provided you an American Rescue Act update on where we're at on that program, which was $8.7 million of federal funds. And the second one is a, a meeting that's on the 25th of May at 11:00 AM at the Helen Hauser Holiday Inn. And it's a brownfield lunch and learn workshop that we're gonna provide. With that, subject to your questions, completes my report.
Thank you. Our wonderful city attorney?
Yes, sir. I do have a couple of informational items I'd like to approach and hand you some documents.
I do have a couple of informational items I'd like to approach and hand you some documents. The documents I just provided to council and the clerk involves Mr. Gregory J. Nelson's request for relief and request for informal mediation regarding council's denial of small-scale Amendment Number 5, 2022, which was ordinance number 17, 2023, and denial of rezoning ordinance number 18, 2023. As you'll see in the memorandum I've provided, on May 4th, the city received a request for relief pursuant to Section 70.51 Florida Statute from Gregory Nelson regarding the denial of the ordinances, as I just stated. Pursuant to 70.51 floor, the request for relief must be forwarded to a special magistrate who is mutually agreed upon by the owner and the city within 10 days after receipt of the request, and the city shall file a response to the request for relief within 15 days following the filing of the request for relief. Received on the 4th, it's not possible to agree to a magistrate and have council concur within the 10 days. We have requested an extension through Mr. Nelson's attorney, and as you see provided with this document is a letter from Ms. Kim Rosinka, counsel for Mr. Nelson, agreeing to extend the time in which to select a magistrate and provide the documentation of the magistrate until June 15, 2023. That will give us an opportunity to select a magistrate and come back to you at your June meeting with that concurrence.
Correct.
So just let you know, the procedure is, you will see that on the June agenda as we move forward.
Council members?
Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions? Thank you.
Certainly. The only other items and update, we did have a summary judgment hearing today with regard to the speak-up case.
Right to Cleanwood?
Yeah, on the Right to Cleanwood referendum. The arguments were heard by the judge, and the judge advised that he will provide a ruling in the near future, I would estimate a week or two. As soon as we do have a ruling, we'll advise you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Who was the judge?
Judge Holcomb.
Oh, okay.
Judge Polk was assigned, but he is out of town, so Judge Holcomb handled the case.
Well, council members, it's been fun. Huh? It's been, it's been fun, and I've loved it, and working with you folks.
No overtime tonight.
No overtime tonight. I'm going to give you a break. With that, if all hearts and minds are clear, and everybody is bringing, I think it's time for what we call as adjourn this meeting.
Adjourn this meeting.
All right. Meeting adjourned.[1761.35]